We'll see the council members and city staff who are appearing via remote or teleconference connections. City council meetings will be held by teleconference or video conference only until further notice. Today's agenda states that rather than attending in person, residents could submit written public comments via email to pubcom, that's P-U-B-C-O-M, at cityofgalt.org. Very important to recognize the dot org ending. Prior to the council meeting, any written comments that were received will be read out loud during the council meeting by the city clerk on the appropriate agenda items, subject to the customary five-minute timeframe. The, we will try to check the email at pubcom or pubcom@cityofgalt.org for additional public comments during the meeting if feasible. We are also trying a new format that allows the public to provide live public comments using the Zoom webinar feature. Members of the public may use the link to enter the webinar as attendees. And that link is found on the city's agenda, and the city's agenda is posted on the city's website at www.cigalt.ca.us. Members of the public should be able to use the raise their hand option in the Zoom webinar to let us know if they would like to speak and should do so when the mayor announces the time for general public comment. We request, as we do at typical in-person council meetings, that speakers provide their name and address when they are called upon to speak, and their line is unmuted. Attendees should also see a lower hand feature if they change their mind and do not want to speak. If you do not see these features in the Zoom module you are using, it may be that your software is not up to date or because of another technical issue on the user's end. There will be an opportunity after the staff report for the public to provide public comment on the special meeting budget agenda item as well. Again, attendees via Zoom webinar will need to raise their hand. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Haglund. The next agenda item, A, call the meeting to order. Tina, may I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lamson.
Here.
Mayor Sandu.
Here.
Please rise for silent prayer and flag salute.
What the hell? Oh, okay.
Flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tina, may I have a replay statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T Universe Cable System. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sapmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Sunday, May 31st at 6:00 p.m. and Monday, June 1st at 1:00 p.m. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you, Tina. Public comments.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for the city council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes due to the statewide emergency and social distancing guidelines. Public comments may be submitted via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org and will be read out loud, subject to the customary five-minute limitation.
Thank you, Tina. Tina, does he have any public comment?
For this agenda budget meeting, I mean budget workshop, we do not have any public comment.
Thank you. Next agenda item is departmental. Subject budget workshop for the City of Galt. Propose operating budget for fiscal year 2020-21 and fiscal year 2021-22. Proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2021-21 through 2024 and 2025.
They post all these on YouTube.
And master fee schedule for fiscal year 2021-21.
Views where others are in one or two. And podcasts are starting to pick up now, too.
There can be no action on this agenda item. And we can staff, can ask question, or we can. Now I would like to turn to Ms. Tyson.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna first provide a few introductory comments for the council and the community watching this tonight. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Members of the community, good evening. This budget workshop is a time when the city manager presents to the city council the recommended budget for the two-year period beginning July 1, 2020, so just a little over a month from now, and ending on June 30th, 2022. Each year of the budget is its own separate and distinct fiscal year. And we put forward tonight a two-year budget that is balanced as to the general fund and all the funds overall, all 28 funds. As they all come together, it's a fully balanced budget. But in particular, because we talk about the general fund most often, that's the fund that provides most of the services citywide. I do want both the council and community to know that we're presenting to you a balanced general fund budget. This budget, as my transmittal message indicates, arrives at a time that is clearly unprecedented in recent memory. We would have to go back to the pandemic of 2000, or excuse me, I think 1918 to have another as far-reaching type of situation face, whether it would be the city, but certainly the state and the nation. So, this budget was put together largely prior to really knowing any of the effects of COVID-19. And so, the budget that we present to you tonight, and Ms. Tyson will be walking you through in a PowerPoint that's gonna begin momentarily, is a budget that would have been balanced, whether it was pre-COVID. And it's certainly, notwithstanding the fact that we are now post-COVID-19, dealing with the effects to our economy as a result of that pandemic. This budget presented to you tonight is also balanced with respect to our anticipated impacts to various revenues in light of COVID-19. And the final thing that I would say before I turn it over to our finance director to walk you through the presentation is that this is a budget that anticipates certain effects of COVID-19. But that we are still so very early in the economic effect and what our economic turnaround may look like, that this budget is both conservative, but it is also put together in a way that if conditions change for the better, if revenues change for the better over the course of the next six months, it provides the city council and the staff the ability to begin to look at those changes, what it means from a revenue standpoint, to be able to plug back in some of the expenses that we have eliminated as a part of this budget, as well as the budget that you, the revised budget you adopted back in September. There's two things driving our ability to balance this budget fundamentally. One, the hard work that the staff and council did through the summer of 2019, culminating in a revised budget that eliminated more than $1 million in expenditure. That carries through in each of the next two fiscal years. The second thing that happens is development is anticipated to pick up. And as the community development director will likely be able to comment to you later on tonight, we have conducted, he has conducted, I should say, a number of interviews with the developers in this community, both residential and commercial. And they feel confident in what they're projecting, although it is yet conservative, conservative projections. They nonetheless feel confident in their development projections. And so, we watch those development revenues with a wary eye, a cautious eye. It's something that you truly can only count on when the proof is in the pudding and it's actually, you know, the development is proceeding, the permits are being pulled, and the permit fees and the like are being paid. But you should be in a position to know that, the extent of our development efforts in this community within the next six months, I would think. So with that balanced budget, we're cautiously optimistic about the future. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Ms. Tyson to provide the presentation.
Thank you, Tom. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and community members. I'm gonna go ahead and walk you through this PowerPoint. The materials for this were sent out about a week ago to council and also posted on the city's website. Next slide. What we'll be reviewing tonight is the master fee schedule update. We'll also be covering the capital improvement plan. And then, of course, the budget with appropriations relative to the 2020-21 budget and the 2122 budget. We're gonna kind of go through in the same order as the transmittal letter. So if you're familiar with that, much of this will be in that pattern, particularly on the general fund. I'll pause periodically for questions as we go through. I wanted to let you know that two key members of the budget team are online and ready to answer questions also. Michelle Neely, who is the budget revenue manager, and Matt Boring, who is the accounting manager. They're both available to answer any questions as we go through the presentation. Next slide. So one of the presentations, one of the documents that you received was the master fee schedule update. This is the proposed fee schedule. It provides each fee within the prior fiscal year, so 1920, based on approvals that this council has already made or that other agencies have made. Then, next to that is a column for fiscal year 2021. And that references any resolutions or contracts or other information that was used to determine the proposed rates. Many of the fees listed have already been approved by council or by another authority, but are listed here to provide a comprehensive document for council and the public. Back in November and December, there were significant changes made by council, primarily around the recreation fees. Those were modified in November, and those were intended to more fully recover direct program costs. Those spanned into this fiscal year 2021, and those are reflected in the document. In addition, there were increases made to building and planning fees by council in December. And those, again, were to try to fully recover costs, and those are embedded in this document. The fees in this document are to cover cost of public services that are requested by business and residents. The fees exclude services that protect health, safety, welfare, and the general public. Those are considered general services, and there are no fees for those. This document complies with Prop 26, which prohibits government agencies from charging more for a service than the reasonable cost of providing that service. Many of the city's fees are still below cost. In this document, there are increases that are due to CPI. That CPI is from a San Francisco, Oakland, San Jose area for December 2019, and it is 2.45%. Again, some are, some of the fee increases or the fees that have been held steady are based on prior council action or other industry agencies, excuse me, or industry standards. Impact fees, measure A rates, refuse contract rates, those are all preset. The revenue from these fees are going to be embedded in the document as we go through the budget. Are there any questions regarding the fees? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. I'm gonna assume that the mayor is gonna allow me to speak at this point. I have a question, Ms. Tyson. This has come up before. When using the Consumer Price Index, why do we use a San Francisco Bay Area Consumer Price Index when we, in fact, are certainly not in that same market, if you will?
Well, that market actually includes our area. So even though it's titled, the way it's titled, it actually includes a Sacramento area also. So it's relevant to our area.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Tyson?
Yes.
Questions? Kind of piggybacking on Vice Mayor's question. How often is this, how often is the CPI reevaluated?
Annually.
Annually, okay. So if, so we, so the CPI, we're currently using it, the 2.45, you said, is from December. That's when it was established, was December of 19, or is that when we? I caught, because I caught you said December of 19 is when we, but that's, is that when it was evaluated?
Yes, that's the, we customarily use the last rate of the prior calendar year.
Okay, so there'll be no, so the CPI for the region that we use will not see any adjustment or change at all, if any, until basically December of '20?
Well, the CPI may be revised or evaluated in between those times, but we normally don't embed it into our documents, except annually.
Okay. Yeah, I was just trying to figure out that. I just, I was just curious of how it would be adjusted compared to, you know, the impact on the economy by what's going on, if there would be any adjustment. You know, I know, like, for example, people that are watching, like, interest rates would fluctuate time to time. I'm just curious how often the powers that be that calculate the CPI, how often they adjust it?
I believe that it's quarterly, but I could be wrong. I know that we embed it annually.
Yeah, and sometimes it, it used to be monthly. And we can look, but I think that at some point, they went to a bimonthly average.
Okay. But for us, as it pertains to us, we only assess it on a yearly basis?
Yes.
Okay, I have other questions about, just a couple of things, but not, I mean, if we're, are we going out of the fee schedule completely, or we're still in that?
We'll be moving on to the CIP, so if you have other fee questions?
Well, they're specific, but not like general, so I can wait till we get into that, those areas.
And we can do that also. The directors are available, we'll be going through.
Do that, that's better. Go ahead.
Any other council member, any other question on this? All right, Ms. Tyson, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna move on to the capital improvement plan. So the second document you received was the CIP plan. This is a five-year document, and it's a five-year plan of the city's anticipated capital projects. The, so it runs 2020 through '21 through 2024-25. Capital projects are construction projects for, or capital equipment costing $30,000 or more with the useful life of at least five years. The budgets for these projects do not include staff salary costs, although they may be embedded later. Associated expenditures in the first two years are made part of the budget figures that we will be discussing in this, in the budget presentation. So those budget appropriations are for fiscal years 2021 and 2122. This five-year plan also includes costs that are beyond the five-year timeframe but are planned projects, and those are listed in Appendix A through J. They, as you can imagine, some of these capital projects expand several years out. The Planning Commission, or excuse me, the Community Development Department staff have reviewed this plan for general plan conformity. And this will be, the five-year plan will be provided to the Planning Commission at their next meeting. There are state and measure A funding for transportation. Those continue to occur. We also, I did wanna mention deferred maintenance continues to increase due to lack of funding in general to budget current projects. Next slide. So I just wanted to highlight a few of the significant projects that are in the budget for the two-year cycle. The first one is that the Police Department facility is requiring some external exterior work, primarily around the roof and the envelope. That is budgeted in this cycle. There's also quite a bit of activity for Walker Park, the restrooms, parking space, soccer football fields, shade structures. These are basically part of Phase Two elements, and they're gonna be supported significantly by State Department of Parks and Recreation grant that the city has been awarded. Hoshalt Park improvements are in this budget, along with several pavement repair. We have multiple funding sources that can assist in pavement repair, and those are scattered throughout. There's also a project for the Walnut Avenue Highway 99 interchange. This is from traffic circulation funding. C Street enhancements, those are scheduled from measure A funding. Wayfinding signs, measure A funding. Also included in the pavement repairs are some funding coming from our solid waste host fee from our hauler contractor. We can go over any of the amounts in these areas or any questions you may have on these.
Council, any question on that? Ms. Tyson, I have a question. Can do somebody explain a little bit in detail on Walnut Avenue, 99 interchange? That expense is gonna come from traffic circulation funding? And what kind of money we are thinking on the next 2020 and 2022, and what we're doing?
Great question. I'm gonna defer you over to Mike Selling. He's most familiar with all of these intricacies.
Yes, Mayor, in response to your question, for the Walnut Avenue Highway 99 interchange, we're starting what we call the feasibility study. It's the initial planning phase, and we will be using our traffic impact fee revenues to pay for that effort.
And at what kind of amount we approximate?
So initially, I think in, for the current upcoming 2021, I'm just glancing at it here, it's about $220,000. And apologies, I'm making my video up.
That's correct, and C Street is $625,000.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear C Street. Yes.
All right, thank you. Any council member, another comment or ask question on this?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Kind of wanted to piggyback on yours. So the $220,000, I mean, clearly, this, this project is a multimillion-dollar project. So what, do we, do we use the funds as we get to start the process? Or we just basically just bank those funds as time moves on, for people that are wondering?
Yeah, so, I mean, you're right, Councilmember Farmer, it's a very, you know, price, high-priced project. You're probably looking at somewhere around $15 to $20 million, maybe even more, depending on how long it takes until we get there. I mean, timeframe on something like this is probably, you know, probably the fastest it would go would be five years, but it's probably more in the, you know, seven to 10-year range before it would actually be constructed and operational. So, you know, the funding for it, a lot of it will be built up over time. But honestly, we'll probably have to pursue grant funding through SECOG in order to fully fund it. Other development fees, as they come online, if there were to be, you know, some industrial developments that occur, we would typically condition them to pay some proportionate share of the cost based on their traffic generation.
So, sorry.
Sorry, there is, there is also some additional information in Appendix B on the Walnut interchange.
Okay. So this, this project just stays in the queue, more or less, on each budget cycle because it's an ongoing project. That doesn't necessarily, necessarily mean it's gonna be a project that's began.
Yes, correct. As I noted, it's, this will just be the initial planning phase, and then the next phase would be to go into the design and environmental compliance phase. And then after that, obviously, would be construction. So those things take time, obviously, and money. And so we wanna have the funding in place before we could go to the next phase.
Okay. So my second question was actually, and I don't know, maybe Claire can just, it's a simple one, maybe Claire can take it or Armando, but regarding the Walker Room Phase Two, I just want to bring this up for people that are watching at home. When we, anytime we see, like, the discussion of additional parks, things being built, I just wanna make it known to the public that these, this stuff was funding from a grant that can only be used specifically for this purpose. We can't, I don't want people out there saying, well, why are we building, you know, why are we expanding the Walker Park if we can't, you know, maintain our landscaping and that kind of thing? It's a common thing I hear. So just want people to understand that that's not, this funding cannot be used for that. Can you just?
Excellent point. Yes, the majority of this funding is exactly what you stated. It's specifically for Walker Park and those enhancements that were already planned.
Yeah, I would just add, this was the 1.7 million, the bulk of the funding that Claire referred to. That's from a grant that the city received through Assemblyman Cooper's assistance, I believe.
Okay. Yeah, and just to piggyback on that, none of the funds that are being used can be used to make any repairs to any of our parks.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, guys.
Any other questions?
I just have one comment. If I may, I wanna thank staff for the CIP. If I may, I wanna thank staff for the CIP binder that was put together. If you get a chance to review, review it. In the beginning, it shows all the projects that have been completed and are pending. And then, under each tab, it lists each project and its description, its purpose and need, and project work completed on it with some comments. And so if you ever wondered about any of these projects, it's in great detail with a lot of numbers and financing projections and things like that. So thank you for putting that together that way. It's easier to read and, and certainly easy to understand.
Thank you. So on the next slide, I'm gonna go through significant utility projects. As you can imagine, these are, can be very costly and need to be maintained on a regular basis. So what is in the 2021 and the 2122 budgets for utilities are projects for Old Town Water Main replacement, Cost Road Water Treatment Plant, Lift Station wastewater rehab, Oberlin, hopefully I'm pronouncing that correctly, Trudy Way wastewater replacement, Field 18 wastewater treatment plant improvements. There's various water and wastewater system and road maintenance improvements having to do with those plants. And then there is a thermoplastic equipment for, specifically for road maintenance that should provide some much-needed clarity on the roads. And that is scheduled for this budget cycle also. Are there any questions about those particular projects?
Can you tell me, or maybe Mike, could you tell me more about the Old Town Water Main replacement and what that's gonna entail?
And I know a little bit. I'll defer to Clarkson, who I think is also on the phone. He can probably jump in after me. But yeah, this is a, there's, the, the main that serves Old Town is due for replacement. And it's gonna be a large, fairly costly project. So that's, that's something that's definitely been on the city's radar, is my understanding, for a few years now. So, so that's a priority for us. Beyond that, I'll defer to Clarkson.
Yes, Council and Mayor, this is Mark Clarkson, City Engineer. The, the Old Town Main, as Michael said, it's been on, on our horizon for several years. We had anticipated several years ago, when we had the redevelopment project, that we would be putting in, that we would have more of a demand in that area. But what we saw after, after that redevelopment phased, phased away, we do need some improvements on some of the mains in that area. And we're really keeping close track of any leaks or any issues out there. And we would start a project immediately if, if we had any major deterioration to the line. Otherwise, this project will probably be extended into another year if we don't see any, any additional demand on our mains in the downtown area. If we do, we'll have the ability to go forward with this project.
Okay, so, you, so you're, but you're, you're not anticipating this project to begin this year unless we, unless we have some problems with the water main, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. And it just, and I know this is not something that's gonna happen, like you just said, soon. But when it does happen, is this, is this the kind of project where, I mean, is this run down like the center of C Street? Is this gonna be like a major disruption to the area, like, like, for example, like going back to the work that was done on Lincoln Way, and the effect that it had on those businesses? I'm just trying to understand that.
Actually, it'll be down parts of B Street and some of the other side streets. C Street and, and Fourth Street are fine, you know, those improvements have been done over the last ten years. And this is, this is the outline outside of the C Street area between A and C, and also between C and F.
Okay, so this goes back to what, I, I know this, this is not what you said, Mark, but last meeting, we had briefly discussed some of the pavement areas, and B Street was one of those that is probably in need of some pavement repairs. But you guys are, you know, don't wanna lay pavement and then rip it up to do water mains, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
All right, that answers my question. Thank you, guys. Thanks.
Any other questions on capital improvement plan? Okay. With that, I'm gonna move on to the budget document itself. So I would encourage you on the capital improvement plan. As Vice Mayor Lozano said, that document includes detailed projects. And they are multi-year, so they do change over time. It's an interesting, if you're interested in any of the projects, it gives you a little bit more insight into them. So now, on the, on the budget document, a couple of comments on the themes for fiscal year 21 and 22. First of all, as Tom indicated, these are balanced, balanced budgets. They do reflect the general fund contributions to Parks and Rec and LLDs. There are no operational improvements, enhancements to this budget. The temporarily frozen positions are, remain frozen and unbudgeted. This budget document, for the most part, reflects pre-COVID-19 budgets. And there are reasons for that. One of the reasons is that it gives a clear picture of what would have been without the pandemic. It reflects the economic impacts that will continue for some time into the future. In other words, we don't really know what all of those economic impacts are at this, at this time. If those impacts were such that expenditure reductions were required, those would take time to develop, and in order to meet the budget deadline, we would, we would not be able to do those. And then, very important, is that this gives us an opportunity to really highlight what we think those impacts are gonna be in an overlay kind of vantage point. And you'll see that as we go through this presentation, and I'm sure you saw that in reading through the transmittal document. We have taken the opportunity to provide COVID-19 estimates. And we'll have some discussion on that and talk about a contingency that has been developed for that. The one notable exception to balanced budget is, we'll talk about it in a bit, is Measure R. And I'll explain that soon. Citywide budget review. So these are just numbers. It basically shows that citywide in this document, the revenues are fifty million for 21, fifty-eight million for 22, expenditures of forty-one million and forty-two million, respectively. I do wanna mention that the revenues provide revenues based on what we know or think we're gonna receive, including all grants, including multifunded, you know, grants that are gonna fund multifunded projects. It also includes things having to do with impact fees, which fund projects that take several years to play out. So that differential between revenues and expenditures is something that, that shows that we're building up to do some fairly significant projects, that most of them are listed in the CIP document we just looked at. So the next slide. To see the operations of the city as it relates to general services that are provided to the community, we need to spend a little bit of time discussing the general fund. The general fund really holds all of those budgets, or the, primarily the budgets for the general services to the community. I'm gonna start with the revenues. The largest source of revenue for this city is property tax at forty-five percent. There are also other pieces to this pie. You see that charges for services are fairly minor. Fines, forfeitures, minor refunds, reimbursements, licenses, permits. Most of these are fairly small numbers. The other taxes number includes in it sales tax, which for this first year of 21 is twenty-one percent. It also reflects in, in other, other revenues. There are rents at about three percent. So, next slide. So in 2021, pre-COVID-19 revenue increases were property taxes of three thirty-nine. These are normal increases along with housing developments that are coming online. Property takes, property tax takes a couple of years after new developments come online, and those sales occur for, for us to really start seeing some of those property taxes. So these are numbers that come from the county. It also includes the vehicle in lieu tax is embedded in that property tax number, which is personal property tax. Sales tax was estimated to be a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar increase into 2021. That's primarily because of online sales that are coming through the county pool. It's a new development that we're starting to see some revenue from. And then there are other small minor increases in that number. The TOT, that's the transient occupancy tax. That was an increase anticipated for the days in, along with expansion of Best Western. Building fees, as you can see there, there's a few of them. Those are related to the anticipated one hundred and forty-six single-family permits that are expected to occur in 2021. That's a fairly conservative estimate, but it does reflect in those fees. And then there's rents. This is, this increase is from the industrial transit operation maintenance center that was purchased this year. There are rents associated with that property. And then miscellaneous income and fees. The, the big item in here is accessory agency, the admin costs flow through here. Next slide.
Claire, I have a question real quick, sorry.
Yes, sir.
On the previous slide, these numbers, it says, the way it's titled, pre-COVID revenue increases. These aren't the actual, is this the number that actually it has increased, or is this the total number for each of these categories?
These are the increases to these categories.
So property tax has increased three hundred and thirty-nine thousand above what it, is that what you're saying?
Correct. What it was the year before, what is the current year?
Sales tax, some of these numbers are actually the estimates, right?
They all are estimates.
Okay.
But yes.
So sales tax, TOT, those would fall under the other tax in the, in your pie chart in the previous slide. Property tax was obviously part of its own, and then building permits, plan check, those are all fees for services, right?
Yes.
Thank you, that's all I had.
Actually, part of, part of the building is under fees for services, part of it's under miscellaneous, it just depends on what its category is.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Sean.
One other thing, so you, you mentioned that out of the other taxes, thirty-three, wait, four, you said about twenty-one percent of that thirty-three is sales tax? Out of the?
Correct.
All right, thanks.
Maybe I'm, Claire, maybe I misunderstood you on the prior slide. Could you go to that? Where did you say, or did you say vehicle in lieu fees are shown or included in one of these? Because I showed us, go ahead.
They're included in property tax.
They are included. Okay, okay. Cause I was, okay, okay. The only reason I say that is I was looking on your page, you know, in your transmittal letter, and they call out the vehicle separate from the property tax. Although this just shows the increase, I, I understand what you're saying now.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the next slide is yet another pie chart, and it really is demonstrating that in the following year, 2022, these, although the rates may go up a little bit, the numbers really don't change much, the percentages. Still the same reliance on property tax primarily. So the following slide shows for fiscal year 22, those revenues, those revenue increases, again, pre-COVID-19, property tax up three hundred and thirteen thousand. So that continues to show that increase. Sales tax, a little less of an increase, that's because now the pool numbers are embedded in here. Building fees reflect three hundred and ten single-family permits. And then miscellaneous fees and income are reflected there. So that wraps up the revenue side. Unless we have further questions, I'm gonna move on to expenditures. Okay. So this slide, it's a little bit busy, but it basically shows the expenditures by department. And it shows the percentage of the total for each department. One year to the next really doesn't change much. The percentages are pretty much the same. What that says is the expenditures are holding steady, and those are based on what the council did back in September. All departments reflect minor mandated changes year over year, like contracts that have been approved in advance. Those kinds of things. Those are in these numbers. And I just wanna point out that at the bottom of this schedule is the COVID-19 contingency. Seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand in the first year and six hundred and seventy-three thousand in the second year. We'll talk a little more about that in a sec. Next slide. So on the expenditure side, there are not a lot of changes. Basically, the changes are previously approved by council. There are contract changes in here for services and salaries. And they're all fairly small, although they're there. And we'll talk about some of them in detail as we go through the departments. This budget does continue the temporary free, frozen positions, there were seven of them. They were done in September. Again, there's no operational expansions, enhancements or improvements. Continues the contribution to Parks and Rec and LLDs, and it includes this new contingency for the COVID-19 estimates. The next slide, please. COVID-19, so as of a week or so ago, what we know is that we're gonna lose some revenue over this, the economic impacts of this pandemic. The first thing we look at is sales tax. Early estimates are a drop of fourteen percent in the first year and twelve percent in the second year. This is mostly due to drop in anticipated food and drug category, restaurant, hotels, autos, transportation. Even though the county pool is up for those online sale distributions, the rest of these categories will pull these sales tax down. Second category is TOT. We're estimating a twenty-five percent drop in the first year, and then hopefully a recovery in the second year. We also anticipate some reductions in the refuse franchise fee. That's due to the impact this will have on local businesses. Again, hoping that that recovery occurs in year two. Business licenses, we've anticipated a small but important decrease there in, probably in both years due to a slow recovery. And then the vehicle in lieu, as we talked about, a lot of property taxes take a couple of years to kind of formulate or brew. This one is expected to come through in the second year of this budget. Property tax may be impacted, but it'll be more than two years out, is our, our expectation. So on the next slide, this is our schedule on the impacts that we're predicting at this point. that we're predicting at this point for COVID-19. And it shows those categories and the numbers associated with categories that I just talked about. So sales tax drops by 366,000 in the first year, another 25,000 in the next. 102,000 drop in TOT for the first year out. Franchise fee 8,000. Business license 11,000 in the first year and 14,000 in the second. And then the vehicle in lieu, 80,000 in year two. This schedule also shows the impact that's anticipated for the market, the golf market. We anticipate a revenue reduction of 637,000. There will be an offsetting expenditure to that, which we estimate to be 337,000 in the first year. In the second year, what we're anticipating is a slow recovery, which means we're not sure that there would be any, any expenditure offset. So we have not put anything in there. We've only put the revenue with a $254,000 impact. So the bottom line of this schedule shows those numbers. 787 and 673 that are part of that contingency that we just talked about. So what we've done in anticipation of these economic impacts is to set up a contingency in the general fund budget to be able to address these as they formulate as we're able to solidify some of these numbers. So the next slide. So just kind of some overall comments about general fund. First of all, the fund balance changes. The, the structural changes made by the city council in the fall of 2019 have positioned the city to weather the current COVID crisis better than most agencies. And I can't impress upon you how important that is as we started to look at this budget. The recovery we were trying to make to create a balanced budget in the long term is, is what we were trying to do last fall and last summer. But it's become critical to us weathering this COVID crisis. The reduction of services have already been implemented to maintain a balanced budget. So we've already done much of the service reductions. With increased building revenue, the city may have restored some frozen positions and services had it not been for the COVID crisis. Instead, what we've done is we haven't restored any of those positions in this budget. Instead, we've created this COVID contingency to preserve funding for anticipated impacts in the next two years. General fund available fund balance is expected to hold steady through the two-year cycle. So general fund budget, ooh, this schedule looks a little small, but it's, this is the schedule that we provided in, in years past that shows the general fund, fund balance. Thanks. This shows at the beginning of 2019, so July of 2019, it was a $10 million fund balance or just under $10 million. After some accounting restrictions for deferred loans, non-spendable prepaid and inventory and other fund balance adjustments, the economic stability reserve that is the council policy calculates 25% of general fund and parks and rec expenditures and sets aside $4,001,41 for that policy restriction. That leaves available to us $5.3 million. Then as we look at the current year revenues, transfers in, expenditures, and the coverage of transfers out for parks and rec, northeast, west side, and other transfers out, we end up with 4.4 million. Now, I do want to say that part of what's embedded in here and under expenditures are the carryforward POs and contracts. So that kind of inflates that expenditure line item for anything that may have spanned a fiscal year. So it's basically moving funding over from one year to another. So when we move over to fiscal year 21, that 4.4 available fund balance beginning, once we put the revenue in, the expenditures, and then those transfers out, we end up with a 4.48. I do want to mention that that COVID contingency is part of that expenditure line item. Then when we go to 22, our revenue numbers continue to improve. We really have very little expenditure increases. And we also have, I believe, a drop in capital expenditures a little bit and some of the other lines. That brings us to about 5 million available fund balance. Again, I would say that this is cautiously optimistic because the COVID-19 impacts could be greater than our contingency, depending on what transpires in the next few months. We are planning on doing a quarterly review of that COVID-19 impacts. And if these estimates hold true, at some point, probably the mid-year budget review, we would want to look at additional appropriations, possibly around those frozen positions or service areas. So I'm going to pause there and ask if anybody has any questions on general fund.
I, I do have a question, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
On this, so between the prior slide, which was the, the, the potential COVID impacts, this is also, the, the slide you're showing now is also, well, I'm sorry about that. Going back to the slide we were looking at. So that shows what your expectation is for the post-COVID, correct?
Correct.
Light here. And this is the, between this and the prior slide is what you'll be evaluating on, say, a quarter, like you just said, a quarterly basis to see if we are on track with those estimates. Is that correct?
Correct.
But will, will that be an internal review? Will you be sharing that with council? I mean, on a quarterly basis, just to let us know where we are? Or in what fashion will we be kept apprised of that?
My anticipation, council member campaign, is that that would be quarterly review that would be shared with the council. I think that one of the things that will be important as the city moves forward in perhaps a budget scenario that, especially if the recovery goes well or, or as desired, that the, the council will be able to consider, as the finance director just indicated, additional appropriations perhaps at mid-year. I, I think that before mid-year, there just simply isn't going to be enough long-term, if you will, six-month COVID-related knowledge, actual figures for you to rely on beyond estimate. And so we anticipate that, say, by January of 2021, you should very likely have the first quarter figures from, say, sales tax and other of these revenue categories to be able to hone revenue projections and be able to see what the effect of COVID-19 is having, especially in the commercial sector here locally. And, and so I think it is incumbent on the city to conduct those quarterly reviews, right down to even assessing, has the development revenue come in the way we, we budgeted or the way that, that even the developers today are thinking? You know, our, our community development director's been working very hard and, and trying to keep his finger on the pulse of what's taking place in the community. And we have some things that are underway. We have some things that are, that are going on, but we're projecting a market increase, although it's conservative. It's nonetheless a market increase in development, both in FY21 and FY22, if you were to compare that to, say, this year or the previous year. And so because development revenues can be fickle and fleeting, they are not and should not be considered a long-term source of revenue. You nonetheless have to factor them into your entire picture. And so I think quarterly reviews, the council being aware of that, the community being aware of that allows you the ability then to make informed decisions, say, certainly at, at mid-year.
And, and then I understand, you know, you and I had a discussion, you explained that very clearly to me. A thought occurred to me after our discussion, Tom, was that on some of those, we simply don't have the data to, to analyze, such as the sales tax, because it takes time for the county to process and for us, and for the state to process to get us that information. On others, would there be benefit in looking at, you know, we, we, we collect the building fees, the refuse fees, we, we probably have a pretty good handle on, as well as business license. Would there be benefit in looking at those on a, on a sooner basis? Or would that information, I think that information could be available, but I, I don't know how useful it would be because those, those numbers are small, much smaller than some of the other ones where we do have to wait.
No, that's an excellent question. And on some of them, so say, development revenue, we can look at those on a monthly basis. And, and let's face it, with development, especially residential development, time of year plays a critical role. There aren't as many permits being pulled in November and December and January as perhaps there are in the spring and summer, even, even fall. And so summer can be a very peak month. You have long stretches of dry weather, and developers can really get in and get going. And so that type of permit evaluation can happen on a monthly basis. You know, you can go through and, and every month in July and August and September and October, you can be looking at what your permit revenue is like to then be able to see, are we going to be able to issue, does it look like between July and November and then, say, March and June, are we going to really issue the, those 130-some permits? Or are we maybe falling a little bit behind? What, what's, what's that look like? So I think those sorts of things can be based on a, on a monthly outlook. Some of the revenues, sales tax clearly, you know, can trail by four or five months. You know, the, 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 the end of the quarter. And then, you know, from a franchise fee standpoint, you, you, you mentioned that. We can clearly be working with our franchise hauler on understanding what dynamic they're facing within the commercial structure that they look at. The other thing we look at then, of course, is the residential side because we bill as a city for that, and we can be monitoring that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a, I have a couple of questions, Tom, that you probably can answer both, I think. Well, actually, the first maybe is a, is a community development. I was noticing, so the anticipated money that, that seems to be obviously going to be a big help to us with the budget, are those factoring in, those numbers, are those factoring in the, the adjusted fee, fees that are in the fee schedule? I noticed there's a lot of stuff under community development or public works, planning stuff that's related to development that's, that there's, there's increases in there. And then there's obviously the CPI that you've had in there. So are we, those numbers that you've anticipated, are those factoring that in?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Second question is regarding the market. I was thinking earlier, I know when we got this, since we've gotten, since you guys have finished this budget and we, and council has presented these, these documents, we've had, you know, some news about the market. So is, is that, I mean, it's welcome news for sure. Does that, you know, I know it's not factored into the, the numbers, but what was the anticipated, was there like an anticipated, okay, we're not going to see anything increase in market till, till this far in the future? But now, like, I mean, is, is that, is that substantially ahead of what you anticipated or?
The, the, the timing of the opening is, I think, ahead of what we were likely anticipating when, you know, you're, you're always making some of these decisions as, at a point in time, you know? And, and you, you base it on as good of information as you have at the, at that moment. But the, the, it's not just a closure. Although we anticipate a closure in FY21 in those numbers, it's not perhaps as long as it's been. And it, but it also anticipates a reduction in the total number of, of vendors. And so some of the feedback we were getting was that some vendors just may, they, they may turn to a different source of income. They may not continue on. And we're, we're, we're trying to factor that in to our projections in a reasonable way, but also a preparatory way. And so to the extent that we don't have a second run at COVID-19 and avoid, say, a closure altogether, that would, we anticipate, help rather than hurt market revenues. But we, based on vendor interviews that have been being conducted and all along this pathway, we are receiving some indication that there, there may be vendors that actually never return, turn to a different source of income or a different line of work.
So in, in, speaking in regards to contingencies, you know, you've, you've, the best you could, when I say you, I mean, finance department, yourself, everybody who's involved in the budget process has done, you know, the best they could to, you'll estimate, you know, that contingency that you think is going to be. And I know Claire kept using the phrase, you know, cautiously optimistic. So there's, there's like, we think we did a good job predicting it, but fingers crossed, you know, we don't see anything that's going to derail that. But clearly, this market thing was a little bit unexpected. Probably could really have nothing but a little bit of a positive effect on that contingency number, right? I mean, we just don't know.
I, I think that that is the optimistic part of the phrase cautiously optimistic. So yeah, I mean, I would agree with you there, but the, you know, the, really, the, it, it's all caution right now. There's, there's, there's a lot at play here. And, and so what we didn't want to do was put together a budget that would be behind the eight ball based on COVID expectations. It could be that sales tax turn out to be worse than what we have projected and that the market turns out to be a little better. And, and so we're, we're not really certain exactly where things will go. And that's why we're talking about, you know, following this on a quarterly basis so that the council has a clear indication based on solid data, data that we can rely on as opposed to actual experience, as opposed to projected experience. And, you know, cautiously optimistic for me means that this very well could turn itself around in a way that we aren't anticipating as opposed to, you know, being another, you know, doom and gloom event.
And market data is also something like what Kurt was talking about. Market data as far as revenue, I know it's not sales tax because that's reported, you know, on a, or, you know, we don't see those numbers for a while. But, but other factors as far as market revenue, we, we able to see those fairly in real time? I mean, from a month-to-month basis too, right?
Right. And, and so what I would say about market data is that our Parks and Recreation Director is excellent at tracking that data. He has excellent staff helping to, to, to track that and to, to hone it, to understand what the trends are. You know, he's been tracking the, the, the 15-year slide in, in revenue from the market for that entire time. So they have a really good handle on, on what's occurring. And I think that as we begin to come back out of a situation which our market was just literally shut which our market was just literally shut down overnight, that if we can do those things to open it up in a way that continues to attract vendors and that vendor stream, we're hoping for a more positive impact, long term revenue impact than perhaps what we forecasted here. But again, our forecast here is based on a lot of years of knowledge. It's based on declining vendor base. And yet it accounts not only for the decline in revenue, the types of reasons that we've seen a decline in revenue, but it's also factoring, it has a COVID factor. And, and I think what we should all really, you know, hope for is that that COVID factor doesn't produce itself.
I, I think, I think it would be, I mean, it's something I'd like to, you know, I, I don't know if that's how the rest of council feels, but I mean, maybe it doesn't need to be every month, maybe every, every couple of months because we don't want to, I don't want to consume too much staff time on it. But I think since we can't see sales tax, I mean, going into a, a post COVID, as we're starting into go into a post COVID world, meaning, you know, hopefully we're out of the worst of it. I don't want to say post as in like it's over, but as we enter that, you know, moving forward to the future, I, I think the market, because sales taxes, so you know, Claire said something about it could be January before we see any sales tax numbers from this, from around this, you know, March, April time. So I think the market data, if we could look at that, that could be presented to council and something simply, you know, not, not something that consumes a lot of staff time on maybe on every other month basis moving forward. I think it would give us a really good barometer of what the recovery, how our recovery is looking, you know, as far as the.
Yeah. As I would envision it, if, I'm going to go back a couple of slides just to give you maybe a visual. As, as I would envision it, as you, as you look at that and you see those red numbers, that on a quarterly basis, maybe with the exception of the first quarter or initially the first report you get, sales tax might be a little bit hard because some of that data just trails so long from, from the state. But in some of these other areas, we might be able to be a little bit more precise or, or, or factor in, you know, more timely information, I guess. And, and I would see that that could happen with the, with the market, just like development revenue. You may be able to see that on a, on a monthly basis. We know what we take in every single month of the market. And the, the biweekly city manager's report is often full of information that our recreation director and his staff track on, you know, how, what was our vacancy rate that week? That, that sort of thing. And that's always an indicator of how the market is performing in sort of those underlying fundamentals.
Thank you, Tom. Vice Mayor Lozano, I believe you have a comment?
I do. I have a couple of questions. And I think this is for whoever wants to take it. On page six of the transmittal statement under general fund expenditures, talks about the primary uses of general fund being personnel related costs, including salaries and benefits for, and operations and maintenance. What, do we have that number? I know I've asked before and you had it right off, pretty much off the top of your head, but the number, the percentage of the budget in which accounts for personnel?
This particular presentation doesn't show that clearly, but it is, I would say mid seventy percent, maybe eighty percent of our budget.
And that, in my experience, anything, you know, eighty five and below is pretty darn good.
Yeah. If you, if you exclude capital, you, you're probably looking at around eighty percent.
Okay. Just a couple of more questions. On, on page seven of the transmittal letter, I've talked about current pulley pension costs and the unfunded pension liability. Where are we at with that unfunded liability? And, and it, you know, I know we're, we're, we're hacking away at that total cost to hopefully get down to more pay as you go, I guess. But where, do you know where we're at with that?
So I don't have the figures from the audit report yet, but it does show in this transmittal letter what we're paying annually, what we're budgeting in for those unfunded liabilities. We gain that information from an actuarial report that we monitor annually. And the other thing the city does is we, we do by practice pay that employer portion in advance, which saves us a bit of money in those interest costs. And we will propose doing that again in the next fiscal year.
Okay. And, and just lastly, because I know we've talked about it quite a bit, especially last summer and, and into the fall. In looking at the, the general fund document where it talks about, you know, having your available fund balance five point three million. Last summer, we were shown a document that we saw seven hundred and seventy seven thousand quite a bit. Where is that in relation to this document? It appears to be pretty much the same document and the numbers appear to be much different. And so I, I guess my question is, is, you know, we were at seven hundred and seventy seven thousand for, for quite some time or, or we saw that quite often in, in presentations. And I don't see where that would be reflected in this.
So that was part of the long range financial plan, which was a five year plan, correct? It, it also was before council took certain actions to basically stop the bleeding. We're, this, this general fund is still at risk of being depleted. This budget though, that is being presented to you is a balanced budget. In other words, the ongoing revenue support the ongoing expenditures. And the city and community has taken great service cuts to accomplish that, both in September and moving forward. So these numbers have changed basically. The seven seventy seven, I believe, was out further than this period of time. I think that that was something that was reflecting a longer stretch, but also these numbers are refined through this budget process and through council action.
The, the way you reduce that seven seventy seven, Vice Mayor Lozano, is to reduce expenditures and or increase revenues. And so we've taken great pains to hold our expenditures essentially status quo. That's why you see the frozen positions moving on through FY twenty one and FY twenty two in response to COVID nineteen. In addition, what you're seeing is also the effect of increased building related revenues. And so all of those things combined, along with, I think the seven seventy seven was, was out another couple of years. But all of those things combine to change all those numbers. I mean, the, the hard work back in September gave us as of September, absent a black swan event like COVID nineteen, but that for all we knew in September of two thousand and nineteen was that that gave us a balanced budget. And so that was an initial effort to stop the deficit spending, to stop the bleeding.
Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. And, and I want to note that, you know, since we're at that part of the presentation that, you know, our, our costs that we have no control of, over are going to continue to go up. And so I think that, like some of my colleagues mentioned, you know, taking a look maybe monthly at the market revenue and what we can do differently there to increase revenue and or reduce expenses. You know, some of those things in forecasting, because I, I, I believe all the impacts of the COVID nineteen are going to, not going to be realized for, for, you know, six or eight months. Certainly from a, a sales tax and, and that perspective, but, but also looking out two years from now, we could see a difference in, in profit, which.
Yes, and.
Four percent of our revenue, so.
Yes, I, I agree with that. And, and so I'd want, I wouldn't want the portion of my budget transmittal message to, to be overlooked because I point out in this transmittal message that long term, the city needs to find a way to increase revenues in order to continue to, to be able to have a balanced general fund budget. Even though year over year, FY twenty one and FY twenty two show increases in fund balance. That's only because we, or largely because, I shouldn't say only, but that is largely because the single largest expense of the frozen positions are continuing to be held frozen. Adding back just a few of those positions completely eliminates the, that, that, that year over year increase in fund balance. So while the general fund itself has been forced to do two things, take on the debt or the, the additional cost of Parks and Recreation and the lighting landscape district, it, it can't do those things and remain balanced. So we, we have to continue on those cuts previously made. And as we all know, cuts, as the finance director has pointed out, result in service level impacts to the community.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other council member want to make a comment?
Yeah. Just kind of going off what Rich said about his question, just to make sure that people watching are, didn't quite understand, and just so that I understand it correctly, is the seven hundred figure that Mitch was referring to was basically, that was, if I remember, was like, that was going to be the result if, had we not made action in September. And that was actually projected out a little ways. So because we did take action, and this is more of it, this is, this is our available amounts now, and that was, that was a forecasted number where we would be at. Had we not taken action, is that correct?
Had you not taken action and if you don't continue to take action such as this budget affords you. So September nineteen was one budget action that, that was a absolutely excellent step. But you need to follow on with budgets like this as well.
So I have one, I have a broad question and then I have a more specific question, which maybe I can wait until we get, it's regarding the master fee. But the broader question I have is, in your, in your transmittal letter, when you were summarizing everything, it referred to the seven positions that we had frozen and, and carrying those on into this budget because they're needed. But so that was seven that we did, but unless I'm misunderstanding, so there's actually like fifteen positions total that are frozen currently and that we're going to continue on to be frozen. Is that, is that right? I mean, the only thing that was confusing was the PD one. It said six, but then it said that two or three, there was like a two, three error on that one.
Yeah. So you're referring to schedule six, I think. And schedule six has some notations. And so this city has been dealing with trying to keep a balanced general fund budget for a number of years. And so some of the frozen positions that you see in schedule six proceeded or were frozen prior to our September two thousand and nineteen efforts.
Those will require a further operational review going forward.
We're diving a little more specific, get clarification on the police. It says the department has six frozen, six frozen positions. Three are pending operational evaluation. Then it further, further goes to say that the two previously frozen police officer positions and one dispatcher position will remain frozen. So I'm just unclear on exactly, I would like to, just to specify for those watching, how many are actually frozen total? How many did we freeze in September and how many are we going to continue to freeze going forwards?
So though, go ahead, Claire.
So just exactly what you said, there are six of them. Three of them are for operational purposes before this council and three of them were through the September process. Remember the September process, they were, they were considered temporary because they just happened to be vacant at the time that we had to make these adjustments to the budget to make it balanced. The ones before that occurred, my understanding is from operational reasons. And those were to be reevaluated as a whole reorganization and they're embedded in most departments. And we're going to go over that when we go through some of the department comments, but, but you're absolutely right. There are six of them, they're unfunded. Three of them are, would be needed for an operational consideration. Three of them are from the September frozen positions, which were never evaluated from an operational perspective, at least not at this point, and would need to be looked at from a, those are really unfunded due to lack of revenue.
Three positions, the two officer, one dispatched, the three that we took action on September that were, that we froze. Those are the ones we're carrying, we're carrying over from that, from that.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah. If, if we had a infusion of ongoing revenue in some way, you can think that those positions would have likely been filled.
All right. I think I'll hold my other question for a little while longer, so that's what I have for now. Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you, Sean. Councilmember Lamson, are you up there? Want to have any question?
I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll go on to Parks and Rec. So this, this talks a little bit about what you were talking about, Sean. So from a revenue perspective, on the Parks and Rec Fund billboard rent of a hundred thousand a year is embedded in this budget. The recreation program increases, these are due to the adjustments made in September, or excuse me, in November on fees are included in this. The GALT market revenue decreased in twenty one, which is a normal trend. But then in the twenty two budget, it shows it as maintaining that level. It was before COVID, it was anticipated that we would be, there were certain actions that the market was going to do to try and at least maintain their revenue level through the two year process. And so that was how it was budgeted. The COVID nineteen impacts are expected to be, before this latest development, were expected to be pretty significant. The one caution I would say is that on the market in the year twenty one, in the COVID, what we did was we anticipated the expenditure reductions also. So as we open up the market, if it opens up slower, if we don't have as many vendors in, the net impact was for twenty one on our schedule is not that much different than twenty two. Now, of course, we're hopeful those will be better and we will be monitoring those. But they are made part of the contingency on the general fund at this point. The next slide talks a little bit about the expenditures. The biggest, most significant expenditure increase for Parks and Rec is the minimum wage increase that created impacts for both twenty one and twenty two. We did some further personnel cost allocation refinements. And those are reflected, you'll see a little bit of variation between the divisions in Parks and Rec and then some of the administrative costs being charged into some of the LLDs and other operations that our Parks and Rec management take care of. There are year over year decreases from fiscal year twenty due to one time capital projection completion, project completions. So in other words, there's not a lot of capital projects in twenty one and twenty two. I believe there's none actually. And, oh, excuse me, there's one in twenty one. And so the drop is fairly significant to, when you look at the schedules from the year we're living in to the projected year of twenty one. And most of that drop is due to capital decrease. All other costs are holding steady. And we continue to watch the park landscaping and the COVID nineteen impacts. This is a schedule, it's kind of an abbreviated schedule, but. This is a schedule, it's kind of an abbreviated schedule, but it shows the revenue to Parks and Rec, um, to the market. The contribution, so it's moving the market revenue or net revenue over to, um, Parks and Rec to cover the parks, uh, Parks and Rec portion of that fund. And then contribution from general fund. This number has gone down significantly. And that's primarily due to the frozen positions that were central services or some form of services. And, um, also the cuts do, that were done in Parks and Rec specifically end up pulling down this number also. So you've got both years listed here and this is just a depiction, depiction of those revenues and expenditures and what those bottom lines look like. And that is all I have for Parks and Rec unless we have other questions. I'll go into lighting and landscape. Okay. As you know, two of the lighting and landscape funds were formed in the nineteen nineties. And they do not have, uh, annual escalators. This is the northeast area and the west side area. The lighting and landscape district from two thousand and five does have a CPI, although it's not sufficient to cover the costs associated with these, um, programs. So it continues to reduce this fund balance. So on the next slide, most city residents are not even covered by these LLDs. So the resulting expense, expenses, um, have no specific revenue source for them. And then of course, the annual escalators, the absence of that. And the, uh, revenue is not sufficient in these LLDs to cover the services. The net deficits from these LLDs is covered by general fund. And general fund covers the areas that don't have an LLD. The, the schedule, um, here shows, it's a little bit different than the others. It's actually got all three of the LLDs on it. Year twenty one, year twenty two, and then on to the next LLD. So shows the anticipated, um, subsidy from general fund. Um, as you can see, fund thirty two, the northeast has, uh, one hundred and forty five, almost a hundred and forty five thousand dollar deficit budgeted in that first year. And then it rises to two hundred and thirty thousand the next year. The west side is not quite as severe with a forty two thousand negative and a sixty six thousand negative. And then the final LLD, the LLD number three is not yet looking for general funds, fund subsidy, but you can see it dropping in its fund balance and we will be looking at that soon. So that is all I have for the LLDs unless anybody would like to ask any questions.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, Claire, you, uh, I'm going through the transmittal letter kind of in order and, and area, and I don't know if you're going to come back to it later, but supplemental police services funds. Uh, where it talks about the CFD. Are you going to talk about that later or?
We are going to be talking about the police area and that might be a good place to jump in there.
Okay, I'll wait.
Okay. Okay. So, um, on the stormwater fund. Now I've started to list some page numbers here because it's a big book. And there are a lot of, there's a lot of data here, but, um, the stormwater fund, uh, spans several pages, ten pages long. And it, um, there are not very many, um, differences in the budget here. They're fairly minor. They are for personnel cost allocations. Basically, we, as you know, we looked at cost allocations throughout and refined them. One of the areas of refinement was billing and collections. And you'll see this comment on a lot of the utility funds. Those costs of administering the billing and collections have been reviewed. And there are some refinements here. There's also increased, um, utility costs. In this particular fund, most of it's electricity. Then in the water fund. Now on the, yeah, um, pages one fifty seven through one seventy three. Manage, this, the management of the city's water plants and infrastructure, very extensive, um, work here and a lot of numbers. But basically the, the changes have to do with those allocations of billing and collections. There are increases, um, provided in the budget for a water service study of, uh, let's see, about eighty thousand in two thousand twenty one. And then there's electricity rate increases that are in this budget. There is also a replacement of a crane for the water and wastewater operations that's split between the two funds. And, um, water valve replacements are budgeted in both years, have been increased. There's also vehicle replacement, which is shared between the water fund and the gas tax fund. And then an inspection vehicle, which is shared between water and wastewater funds. So trying to utilize the funds appropriately to make sure that the equipment is sufficient to maintain these facilities. The next slide shows the wastewater fund. Again, similar kinds of increases, the cost allocation, the electricity rates, some supplies and treatment costs, um, increases. There are some regulatory fee increases in here. A hundred and seventy four thousand in year twenty one and forty four thousand in year twenty two. These are considered mandated. Um, they're not, they're not up for negotiation. We also have the AC unit and smart cover unit maintenance costs increases. And then you see the replacement crane and the inspection vehicle. So they're being shared with this fund. So that's it for those utility funds. These are all wastewater funds. And go ahead and go into streets and transportation unless anybody has a question. Okay. Um, streets and transportation, this is, uh, we have a couple of different areas here, primarily gas tax, and then we'll talk a little bit about a Transportation Development Act. On the gas tax fund, um, utilities and refuse rate increases combined increased five point five percent, two point, two percent in the two years. There's some increased cost of specialized supplies in both years. And then there is the thermal painting equipment for road maintenance. It was listed in the CIP document. And then the half of the vehicle replacement from the water fund. And those revenue sources are your gas tax. This one is your Transportation Development Act provides revenue. Again, we've got those personnel allocation refinements. An increase for city's share of the GALT South County Transit Service Costs, per a service provider agreement and county administration costs. Again, these are mandated costs. Project cost overruns in this fund are covered by, um, the Sacramento Transit Authority Fund. So there's three funds that kind of work together to help fund some of these larger projects. And that is it for the street funds. Another specialized funds is the Measure R Fund. This slide just talks about what this fund is. This supports public safety services to the community. It's a transaction and use tax that was approved by the voters in two thousand and eight for a half cent tax. Use of the Measure R funds are for all program functions and operations over police services expenditures as reflected in the fiscal year two thousand seven eight budget. And it included things like hiring, recruitment, retention, training, anti-gang, um, activities, anti-drug, graffiti abatement and police equipment. So anything around the police. And these were the areas that needed attention at that time and where the money has been focused. So on the next slide, it talks about in your budget book, pages seventy one through seventy eight. Revenue from this particular sales tax portion is holding set, uh, steady. There's no significant impact, um, due to the COVID nineteen. That may change over time, but because the nature of the, the tax is a little different, um, it's not so, um, greatly impacted. Expenditures continue to increase, however, greater than the pace of revenue. And it's primarily due to personnel costs increases. And you see the percentages there. This is the fund that is not presently in a balanced budget position. It's, it's imbalanced. It's only eight thousand in year twenty one. And separate and apart from, um, one-time capital costs, fifty four thousand in year twenty two. Even though it's, it's not, um, balanced from a ongoing perspective, there are sufficient funds in the fund balance. So in the second year of this budget, um, are three replacement patrol vehicles. We know that we got way behind in replacing these previously and we really would like to try and keep pace with it. So they are in this budget. This will require a more long-range look at this fund and what it is covering and how it should sustain over time. So we'll be working with the police department on a five-year long-range financial plan specifically for Measure R. We'll look to the committee to, um, provide input and then we'll make recommendations to council based on, um, what is best for, uh, the operation of the police department from an operational perspective. Keep in mind that, um, there are other funds that cover safety, but for the most part, they're either small, um, or, um, or it's general fund. So we'll look at all of those funds at the same time when we, when we do that evaluation. So the next slide talks a little bit about police department. But Vice Mayor Lozano, I don't know if you want to speak before or after I get to police?
After is fine.
Okay. So, um, what I've done here with all of these department slides is to just show what the most significant budget highlights are. So in this fund, um, back to your comments, Sean, there are temporarily frozen positions. There's two officers and one dispatcher. That's from September. The other frozen positions are pending organizational evaluation. In other words, they've been vacant long enough and unfunded long enough. We're not sure that they need to, um, continue, but that would require a, a review holistically from that department. As you know, finance did one of these last year and brought forth a reorg. And a couple of the other departments have gone through that process, but, um, police still would, would want to have that opportunity to do that. Um, embedded in this budget is the emergency operations plan. There's funding for that. It's about thirty five thousand and it's in fiscal year twenty two. There are also increases having to do with the Sacramento Regional Radio Communication System. That's the, uh, radio licensing. Also capital improvement project for the exterior of that building are in the CIP plan. And then there, there are other cost increases that are not in the general fund. The CFD will be covering cost of tasers in two years. And there was another vehicle to be funded through one of the other special funds. And I can't recall which one it was, um, but it was an unmarked. I want to say it was the safety fund. So that is all I have for police department. If you have further questions at this time for them.
All right. Any council member have any question?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Ms. Tyson, uh, you talked about the CFD fund, uh, covering, I think you said the cost of tasers possibly a patrol car. In, in the report, uh, it talks about, um, the estimated revenue, three hundred ninety eight thousand for fiscal year twenty one and then four hundred and six for twenty two. Is that the total revenue and then we split off a piece of that fire? Or is that the, is that the total amount we receive for police?
No, that, that, um, there is a split out for the fire that, that comes out of that revenue.
Okay. And so do the expenses also reflect what is expended out of the fireside or is that just our expenses?
My apologies. Let me take a quick look. I don't recall if that's out of transfers.
On page seven of the transmittal letter.
Yes. No, it's in the expenditures. I believe it's reflected directly in the expenditures.
Okay. Can you point me there? Cause I'm a little lost.
So I went to, um, let's see, XXXIX page. So I'm going to, I'm going to jump ahead to the summary of resources and requirements by fund. It's a landscape document and it shows, it starts with, um, general fund, Parks and Rec, Fire Range, goes down to traffic safety, public safety. There's your CFD. Shows three hundred ninety eight thousand revenue in, uh, I mean, year twenty one. And it shows two hundred and seventy one in requirements. So it, money going out. That's going to include those monies going to, to the, the fire. I think Michelle could answer this question also, um, if you would like more details on what's embedded in that number.
No, that's okay. I don't want to hold the, the group up. I can, I can just touch base back with you.
Okay.
But, but, uh, yeah, maybe, uh, in the next day or so. I appreciate it though.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a fast question though, Claire.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just to circle back to those six. So basically if I'm understanding you correctly, it's kind of just kind of like a house cleaning matter where we just maybe need at some point, need to just kind of look at all those positions that have been frozen for so long and decide if they just need to be kind of swept out of there instead of just carrying them forward. Is there a reason why they're kept in so long? Is it because it's easier just to keep them in there in case we need to just do a quick evaluation and say we need them? And that way we don't have to like do a full-on addition of positions. Is that, is that why they're kind of rolled over for so long?
My guess, and this is based on when I started here in, uh, the prior city manager conversations with that person, is my understanding is that, um, all departments were going to look at their operations, what they needed for operations, how they could do without those. Whatever positions were frozen, whether that was, um, it was implied that they were going to be ongoing. And each department would be asked to do some form of reorganization. My guess is that between changes in city manager and between, um, the demands on the police department, especially considering all the vacancies. My guess is they just haven't gotten to it. But I would imagine that that's going to occur in the next short-term year or so.
Yeah. Because I just think, I mean, if there's a reason for it and it makes something easier, then I would get it. But if not, it just seems like that or we had that, it just seems kind of just, kind of muddies up the water and maybe just little, like I said, like a little house cleaning at some point, just to make things simpler to understand each time we do this with the budget.
Agreed. Yeah, I agree.
Thanks, Claire.
No problem. All right. Then I'm going to move on to Public Works. So Public So, Public Works, as you know, manages those transportation funds, the utility funds, all of that. But at their core, they're really managing the property owned and operated by the city. So, the highlights, this is basically their general fund, is they do have a temporarily frozen position from September for Facilities Worker One. They have other frozen positions that are pending that organizational evaluation that we talked about. They have increased maintenance costs and HOA fees for the newly acquired industrial drive facility. They also have some increased maintenance projects in twenty-two for some of these city facilities, PD, City Hall, Littleton, basically HVAC upgrades and controllers. And those are their only increases. No questions, I'll go on to Community Development. This department has oversight of building planning and code enforcement. They also have a temporarily frozen position. This is a planning official, and other frozen positions are pending organizational review. They have done some work on their cost allocation, and we've refined some of their personnel costs to distribute to other funds based on their activities with collection of permits, et cetera. Their professional services, due to the increases in activities and building, which provided that additional revenue, there are additional costs, and absent staff sufficient to do that, we'll be looking to professional services for building inspector and the permitting activities. Of course, if the revenue doesn't come in, these inspections or the permits, as they wane off, these professional services costs will, budgets will be reduced or will be left unspent. So, the biggest impacts to this budget have to do with those professional service increases. Okay. The next slide is Finance and IT. This department, our department, also has a frozen position. It's the Financial Analyst that, in the absence of this position, it's difficult to get you some of these numbers. We've reduced professional services, that's because of the action that this council has taken on the CFD development. Pretty much, most of those costs will be covered by developer deposits, and so, we've reduced some of our professional services costs. IT budgets look like they've increased, but basically, they have not increased citywide. They've just been shifted to, there will be additional costs having to do with security from our cyber attack. And at the point that this budget was developed, we don't have any expectation that that'll be distributed costs, and if it is, we don't know exactly what the basis of distribution will be. And so, we've left those funds sitting in the IT budgets for now. They may be distributed back out in the midterm budget evaluation, or at least partially. So, overall, there's no increase to IT budgets, but there appears to be on the schedules that are provided here in pages thirty-three through forty-one. That's it for Finance. So, Administration and Other, I kind of threw everything else into this slide. There really aren't very many increases, but I've listed them here. Clerk's Office, there is an increase in year twenty-one for the November election costs of, I think that increases twenty thousand. It's a one-time cost increase that's mandated. Attorney Contract is an annual increase, four percent. General Liability has had a significant increase in the first year, and then has carried that through. We're not really sure what this industry will do in years to come, so we have not increased it going forward beyond that first year. Events Budget is at seven thousand, and we'll be returning to council about that. And then, the COVID-19 contingencies were established in this other area. So, are there any questions about any of the department budgets? All right. Seeing none, I'll go on to what's next. So, we have some work to do to validate revenue performance quarterly or monthly as needed by the council. We want to avoid over-reliance on development revenue to cover long-term ongoing costs. Development revenue is really, by its nature, one-time. There may be ongoing revenue provided by property tax, but they're really kind of comparing apples and oranges in some way. They're not exactly consistent, so we have to be careful of that. If the revenues perform better than forecast, or when we have additional revenues, we need to really be judiciously looking at adding back those frozen positions, those seven. We need to set aside funding for CalPERS increases, they will come. And then, we need to undertake the most critical deferred maintenance projects. You know, we continue to kind of kick that can down the road on some of these projects, and they only become bigger over time. So, these are some of the validations that we'll need to be doing in that quarterly review, and then bringing back to council. So, my final slide here in this packet is Annual Budget Direction. So, from this workshop, what we're hopeful is that council brings us, gives us enough direction for us to present through the public hearing process on June 2nd, budgets, proposed budgets, for your consideration and approval. With that, I would entertain any other questions or any direction or comments.
Thank you, Ms. Tyson. I would like to ask all my council member, I would call everybody's name for question one or more in order to give the equal opportunity for every council member. When we're going to round two, please raise your hand and say your name, and that's where we can, first of all, I would like to ask Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, I just, I appreciate the way the report was laid out. And, you know, this is my first time with the city doing a, looking at a two-year budget, and then we had to throw the COVID-19 in there. That really didn't do us any favors, and I appreciate you guys, all of the staff, taking the time to put this together. A couple of things I would look at, or ask to look at. And again, it just has to do with, I think, that unfunded liability, and maybe bringing back at our next meeting, a little bit more detail on that. I think just long range, that's really going to cause us some, it could cause us some problems if we don't address it. And then, I think we maybe take a look at, you know, putting some milestones in place should our economic future look more positive, you know, down the road. The market brings in more money, sales tax brings in more than we thought. Putting some triggers in place, and at least agreeing on those ahead of time, that we will then start looking at priorities of reinstating either positions or services to the community, or whatever it is. And, but I think we really, really need to look at some of our capital improvement projects. You know, we have, I was two, what, year and a half or two years ago, our Park and Rec Director had a presentation to the council at the time regarding our, you know, the state of our facilities. And I think we really need to take a look at, you know, putting a few bucks away for that in the future. And certainly, keeping an eye on that and ensuring that we can move forward in either repair, replace, or whatever we're going to do with it. But certainly, start to sock away a few dollars for that as well. And then, and again, I mentioned it earlier, but I don't think we need, I think we can't lose sight of whatever we can do to give back to the community at the right time. You know, it's all the community's money, regardless of how it's spent, but certainly, in the last year, we've taken some measures to reduce our expenses. And I'm not, by any stretch of the imagination, saying right now is the right time, but certainly, I think we need to look at, you know, what that might look like in the future. So, that's all I have for now, and again, I appreciate the report. Much of it was laid out really, really easy and easy to read, so I appreciate all the work that all of the department heads and staff members at work with them did to put this together, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Campion.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate tonight, you know, it was a well-defined and thorough presentation. I thought it presented the city's, you know, fiscal position in a very clear and concise manner. The transmittal letter, I thought, was comprehensive, easy to read, understand. And I appreciate those things, and I know the general public does, too. And I am honestly pleasantly surprised to hear the fiscal position we're in, given all of the negative news that has been out there, and looking at what other jurisdictions are doing. And I guess I can't emphasize or agree, I guess, with the manager, the Finance Director, that taking those actions in September, ahead of the COVID, actually had a tremendous benefit to us going into this budget cycle. I really appreciate staff's efforts, in particular, you know, Claire, her staff, Michelle, and Matt, and certainly, the City Manager, Tom. And I know all the department heads and staff, because it's a holistic effort, and it is a very time-consuming effort. And I appreciate the time and commitment they put to it, and the thoroughness by which it's been completed, so, thank you.
Councilmember Lanson.
Thank you. One of the things that stood out to me was that you're not trying to balance a budget on projected growth, you're being very cautious about that. And I think that has got us into some budgetary problems in the past, so I noticed that. I really appreciate that. Is this something the Finance Department does on their own? I know that's a joke. It's every department head, and all the directors, and the support staff that puts this together. How many people do you think are involved in this process, Claire?
Wow, that's a great question. You're probably looking at at least, well, it's a small city, but you're probably looking at thirty people or more.
Wow, amazing, thank you. So, just, I noticed sometimes people get confused between budget and expenses. So, this is our projected budget, what we're budgeting money for. What happens to the overages? If there's not enough, then what happens to the underages? What do we do with that?
So, when we bring the budget forward, there will be a resolution, and it'll basically give us kind of the rules, along with any other policies. So, as an example, there are certain purchasing policies that certain things come to council, if it's over thresholds or certain kinds of projects. But it also comes to council if there's not sufficient budget. So, there are the abilities to move budget around under the responsibility of that department head. So, if my supply budget is too small, but my postage is too high, and I can move a few bucks around, I have the ability to operate to do that. But even when I do that, all of those results end up coming back to council. So, if there's additional money that needs to occur, you know, through the COVID contingency, as things are evaluated, and that money is, "Hey, I need to use that over here or there," it's all coming back to council and becoming a public item for the community to see also.
Thank you very much, that, I think that makes things very clear. And that's all I have right now, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Farmer.
Yeah, just one specific question. I don't know, is Chris, yeah, Chris is on the meeting with us. I think this is his, I was just curious, I mean, I have several questions, which I think are minor, that I think I could just get answers to. I'll just shoot off some emails between now and the next meeting, and get some clarification on some things regarding the fee schedule. One thing I noticed as a significant increase, and I was just curious to get some reasons behind it, was under the Minor Use Permit area, Chris, some of these are, you know, sixty percent or so higher. So, it's a two-part question. One is why the significant jump in those areas, and it's on five or six different ones. And then, second part of that question is, as these relate to, obviously, I can see subdivision tentative, you know, things like that. Are these things that the developments that we're clearly counting on coming online soon, are these things that those people are privy to, and this is something that's going to, you know, you know, catch them off guard? So, that, could you answer those?
Yeah, so, good evening, Chris Ariz, Community Development Director. Glad to be here tonight. So, answering the first question, I don't believe, and I'm trying to get my spot here on the fee schedule, but we had this significant increase in the Minor Use Permit, I think in February. We did that at the beginning of the year, and really, it was intended to kind of catch up to where we thought we needed that fee to be for the staff time. So, we have two Minor Use Permit fees. One is a staff-level review, and that only changed very little. And there's typically not too much staff time involved in that. But sometimes, a Minor Use Permit can get moved to Planning Commission. And when it goes to Planning Commission, there's significant more work that goes into it. And the fee at the time did not cover the costs associated with that. So, we felt then that it was needed to bring that up to be where it is today. Then, the second part of your question was, is will it affect the development projections we're expecting? And the answer is no, because the fees that were raised in that manner were essentially application fees, which the development projections had already paid. So, we're now looking at a new set of fees for the projected development associated with building permits. So, those planning fees have already been paid by the developers that we're expecting to build in this next fiscal year. Does that answer?
It does, yeah. I'm just looking at a couple of notes I have written here. Yeah, okay. All right, and if I have any additional questions on this section, I'll shoot you an email, and you can answer.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
I do have some, like I said, I have some other things I have bookmarked throughout the fee schedule, just basically questions, nothing that jumped out at me is that I had a big problem with. But clearly, I think as all of us will, you know, have more time to dive through all this, and maybe have more questions next time around before we do a final approval. But I, you know, I think I want to echo what's been said so far, is that I think, you know, in light of all the negative news that's, you know, that we've been facing since last fall, that it is good to hear that some of the things we did last fall were, you know, seemed to have been enough, at least at this point, to this point, to, you know, carry those forward. And that, along with, you know, the increases that we're expecting, and the cautious, the optimistic, did I use that word? That will be okay, and that's a balanced budget. So, I just want, yeah, I want to thank everybody that was a part of this, and I thank Tom for making it very clear. It was very clear, and I think- clear and, and understanding the first ten pages was, was very, the summary was good. And I, I kind of had the gist of it just that far in. And so again, thank you for all you guys' hard work. I'm glad we can kind of get to this point. This is something that's been kicked down the road for a while because of all the stuff that's been going on. And I'm glad we're at this point and we can, you know, turn a corner on this thing. So that's all I have for now, for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. I believe all the council member making the same thing of my impression. This budget balance is very clean. Thank you, our city manager. You make a very great effort to make a balanced budget. There's a lot of detail, you know, you see these details. We get three binders. It is piece by piece. Thank you, Tom. And I also like to, there might be, I don't have a question at this time, but I have, like, maybe is too concerned, one is same concern, I might be the last Chris off the line, is, is the fee increase. The fee increase on the development, I do understand that he feel comfortable, but he also know the other side of the developer. We do not want anybody feel, because I believe we last time we did increase the development, but I'm not gonna go each one of the subject, but it might be at the next meeting. And then also there is fees increase on the soft voluntary. That's kind of my little bit concerned. If we can have that money be shipped somewhere else, that my concern, the third my concern, and we will clear, there is lot of position is frozen. I believe we, we have to make the budget and all other city is, 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 is have same problem. Even, even state of California, there was a surplus, now they are in a shortfall. Again, Tom, thank you for give us a very clean budget and let's whatever, I need clearance on the next meeting. Any council member, any other question on second round? If it's not, I would like to open the public comments. Tina, you might, we can have some public comment on, on the email. And I also like to, there is a public comment. If anybody raise your hand, if somebody on a Zoom webinar and would like to speak.
I have not received any emails through PubCon.
So you have no public comment and no, nobody on the webinar?
We don't, yeah, we don't have anybody raising their hand on them.
All right, thank you. Again, if any council member, any discussion, anybody have a question? Otherwise, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, just real quickly, if I could. I wanted to bring up again, the, kind of the last page, as far as I can get here. So what we would be intending to do is bring back these documents for council's consideration at your next meeting, which is next Tuesday. The city conducts a public hearing for consideration of its biannual budget. And we, we have published that notice in the newspaper of general circulation. And so we're intending to bring this back along with the resolution that Finance Director consider, spoke about, excuse me, for your consideration next Tuesday.
Thank you, Thomas. Since you have a comment, I would like to make a, actually, I'm gonna ask you if you can give a minute or two, just the update on COVID nineteen, you know, you have from the, from the governor. Officer, the second my question is me and there is some other council member wants to go back to the council chamber. There is any chance or what restriction we cannot go back to council? If you give me a brief.
Right. So the the, the, the COVID update, I'm looking here real quick for something I received this afternoon. The, the, the COVID update from last week was, of course, that effective Friday at around eleven fifty-nine AM, the most businesses could open up. There is a discreet list of certain types of businesses that had to remain closed under guidance from the state of California. And of course Sacramento County was following those requirements. But as I understand it, the governor did announce the opening of salons and barber shops in his address today. And so they have to follow certain guidance as prescribed by the state of California. And in doing that, our Economic Development Manager thinks that around eighty-eight percent of businesses in Galt, including those salons and barber shops, would now be able to be opened so long as they follow the social distancing guidelines as promulgated by the county and the state. So we're, we're making progress, you know, clearly as, as we can see it. With respect to holding meetings back in the chamber, I think we need to, I, I'm, I'm not sure I'm fully prepared to comment on that right now because I need to take a look at the underlying guidance. I, I don't have it immediately on the top of my head. I think we'd probably be looking at that the earliest maybe at the second meeting of, of June. But we'll take a look at that. There are a number of things that in order to open up, you have to do. And so some of this guidance requires that in order to open up offices and things like that, which I believe are a tier three. And we're not at tier three yet. You, you have to put these things in place to include the ability to socially distance. And so we do want to look at how we would set up the chambers. As you might recall, very early on back in, in March, you know, we, we, we closed off the seating because in those days, things were changing almost by the hour, you know. At first it was you could be in a group of thirty-five, and then it was twenty, and then it was ten. And then it was basically zero. You couldn't be in a group. And, and so by the time we held the meeting, all of the public seating was blocked off. And we, we had some, a little bit of seating out in the lobby and then in the community room. But we have to, we have to be able to do a couple of things. And we have to show that we can protect the public. We have to show that we can protect the employees. And so we have a obligation under a number of statutes to be able to, to, to do that. And of course, we want to be able to protect the council and those staff members, obviously, at attendance. And so we're putting together our reopening documents right now. We're looking at what sort of modifications, if any, we need to make in the council chambers in order to facilitate more public participation and as well as protect the council and staff. And so here's one of the things that is just an example of what we have to examine and analyze. If you've been to a store lately, they have what are called sneeze guards up, basically. You're, there, there's Plexiglas now. Maybe a thin sheet, but there's nonetheless a barrier between you and the employee that is ringing up your, your, the goods you might be purchasing. And so we have to go through and make a determination about where we need to do that. Do we need to provide? And how would we separate or segregate off the, the council seats from staff seats and things like that if we can't maintain six feet distancing and all the like? And so we're in the middle of, of doing that and putting that plan together. But like I said, I think it will likely be more along the lines of the, the second meeting of, of June at the earliest, based on what we know out of the county and the governor's office right now.
Thank you, Tom. Any other council member? Anybody have any comment? I would like to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, Heather.